Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of June 7, 2021. For viewers watching at home, some commissioners and members of the public are participating via video conference or teleconference. The rest of us are in this room socially distanced. Please join me, stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the Secretary please call the rule?
Commissioner Lanson?
Present.
Commissioner Link?
Present.
Commissioner McMahon?
Present.
Commissioner Newman?
Present.
Chair Bus?
Here. All right, tonight we have with us interim Deputy Community Development Director Steve Kearns. Mr. Kearns, are there any written comments, announcements, or continuances at this time?
Yes, Chair Bus, thank you very much. We did receive some correspondence regarding the public hearing tonight. That was distributed through a supplemental packet of talk, which is this afternoon. That was the only item received.
Thank you, sir. All right, now is the time for public comments. At this time, any person may address the commission regarding a city planning matter that is not on this evening's agenda. Should the commission wish to discuss an issue raised by the member of the public, the issue will be referred to staff for scheduling on a future agenda. Anyone who would like to speak under public comments must complete a speaker card and file it with the recording secretary before the public comments portion of the agenda is called. Speakers' remarks should be addressed to the commission as a whole and not to an individual commissioner or staff member. Unless otherwise provided by the commission, speakers are limited to five minutes. Screen will show you the remaining time you have. And I do not believe we have any speakers this evening. Next, do we have the consent calendar with the minutes of April 26, 2021? Do any of my fellow commissioners have any comments or a motion to approve those minutes? Commissioner McMahon?
I move that we approve the minutes of April 26, 2021, as written.
Will the Secretary please prepare us for a vote?
Commissioner Lanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Link?
Aye.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Chair Bus?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right. Now, will the clerk please open the public hearing?
Hearing having been advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 7A Oak Tree Permit OTP 2020-70547 to allow removal of three oak trees involving a Coast Live Oak, a multi-trunk Valley Oak, and a smaller Coast Live Oak due to the health and location of the trees on private property with a single-family dwelling located at 4014 Crest Haven Drive. The applicant is Catherine Wolf, Distinguished Creations Incorporated.
Thank you. Presenting on behalf of staff is Senior Planner, Ms. Arslan.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Planning Commission, and members of the public. The application before you is a request to allow removal of three oak trees on a private, single-family residential property. The project site located, oh, the project site is located at 4014 Crest Haven Drive. And again, just to reiterate, the three oak trees are going to be two Coast Live Oaks and one Valley Oak. Little bit of background, in 1976, City Council did approve RPD 75-136, which established tract 2343. Subsequently, in 1978, a home was built. At the time of the plating, as best as records can show, there were five oak trees that existed on the property at that time. There are currently five oak trees and two landmark sycamores on the property today. OTP 2020-70547 is the case before you tonight. I was applied for in 2020 to remove the three trees. And again, project description, proposed tree removal do include: one 29-inch Coast Oak Live. It's going to be noted in the report as W2A in an interpretation. One multi-trunk Valley Oak is going to be noted as WOT3. And one 18-inch Coast Live Oak is going to be noted at WOT6. Tree, according to the report again, the applicant, Tree W2A and W3 are creating a potential hazard due to imminent structure failure. And we'll talk a little bit more about that throughout the report, the presentation. Tree W6 is preventing safe right-of-way passage for emergency vehicles on Hollyhock Court. And that's according to memo from the fire department. Here's a site plan and a tree plan. You'll notice the trees that are highlighted are the ones subject to the case that we are reviewing tonight, 2A, 3, and 6. And that's approximately their locations on the site. Here is an oak tree table summary. The summary does talk about attempts to identify, again, each tree, the associated species, genus name, and the common name, as well as the DBH, which is the diameter at breast height, the health of the tree prognosis, and recommendation. As you can see, 2A has evidence of declining health and structural instability. 6, again, as I indicated, it is recommended by the fire department to be removed due to impeding safe passage of emergency vehicles. And 3, it is suspected to also have the same pathology as W2A, however, lab tests may be required to verify that conclusively. And now I've got some photos here to sort of demonstrate how WOT6 is sort of affecting that Hollyhock court. You'll notice there's a branch that's growing very laterally. And as that continues to grow, it'll continue to sort of droop. And there was just one moving truck here as an example that ended up making contact with that branch. And I'll elaborate on this a little bit further, but the fire memo and the code, fire code, Ventura fire code, does stipulate they need 13 and 1/2 feet of clearance over the entire road width. This is more important when the road width is actually narrow. And in this case, Hollyhock is narrow, one of the more narrow streets. Here's a picture of WOT2A, just a quick snapshot of some of the issues. It's unbalanced canopy, thinning foliage, and it has evidence of past failure. I was also at the site and have some additional pictures here. What I have pictured here also, if you take a look at the trunk, it's a hypoxalon dieback of the trunk. And that's associated with some sort of pathology. In this case, we suspect it's the fungi that does choke out areas of the tree and deprives it of oxygen. And you see these, well, this is evidence of a previous canker. And I've got that marked where it is. Also, another thing that's noteworthy is we did talk about an unbalanced canopy, and I hope this picture kind of shows that, where the more the canopy and the branches are more to one side than the other. So there's a little bit of an imbalance there. Here's another picture, again, of the dieback of the trunk. And again, that looks like an old canker. Here's some dehiscate branch stumps. I circled the one, dehiscate, which occurs naturally when a branch falls off spontaneously due to whatever conditions. That's circled in red. You notice the difference between that, it looks like a kind of a, the tree helps to sort of mend itself with something that's been removed by human, okay? It's been cut. And that's the difference between a cut stump and a stump that fell off on its own. Oops, sorry. And once again, 2A, here's evidence of branch dieback. And again, this picture doesn't really do it justice, but when you're there in person, you really do see that there are quite large branches sprawling that don't have any foliage on them whatsoever. And next is WOT3. This is the one that was suggested to have some lab work done, again, to determine conclusively if it does have the same pathogen that 2A has. Should also be noted, there was a tree removed sometime in the past, WOT1, which was gravely stricken with this fungus. I'll share that name with you in a minute, but let me get through this. So again, appears healthy, but again, we think it may harbor some infection. Again, we do see some dehiscate branch stumps, previous failure. Another thing I'd like to note, too, if we take a look at the slide and we note the branch there, it is growing, again, quite laterally. It takes actually a 90-degree turn like that, and that branch does extend quite a few feet beyond the tree from the tree as a radius. And again, also just to show an up-close view of the dehiscate branch. There's also evidence of yellowing leaves, so I took a picture of that. And lastly, there is also some structural issues, again, potential structural issues to consider. This does have a co-dominant truck. Now, this is actually a view, from one view, it doesn't look as bad, but when you come around the tree, you can see where we're looking at. That's about, you know, that sort of connection where it happens is only about 2 and 1/2 feet above the ground. So if you can imagine, this thing is attached 2 and 1/2 feet, and then you have probably another 20 to 30 feet above that, that's going to be cantilevering, again, subject to wind sway and forces. So there's a potential there for that to split, and that's just, again, common, you know, common perception, layman perception. I'm not an arborist, but you could take a look for yourself. Again, just to show you some more of that severe lean, that's that branch that I mentioned that's growing at a 90-degree angle, and it does continue. And again, the span is pretty far, estimate about 20 feet. So there's that. Here's another, a better view of the site, tree plan again. I want to note kind of what's being shown here. Actually, that should have been highlighted as well. But WOT1 and WOT4 are oak trees that are going to be remaining, let's see, back up, as well as WL2 and 1, which are sycamore landmarks. And those are located out front. So this is a view of WOT4. Again, coming, this is actually on Crest Haven, looking towards Hollyhock. And there's a picture of the two larger sycamores. So a type D oak tree permit, planning, okay, Planning Commission process is required for the removal of any protected oak tree with a diameter of 24 inches or more when measured four feet above the tree's natural grade. Three findings must be made in order to approve that. Approval is consistent with the intent of the Oak Tree Preservation and Protection Ordinance since the proposed removal of the oak trees will be replaced in accordance with mitigation standards adopted by the Oak Tree Preservation and Protection Guidelines Resolution 210-14. The project is consistent with Thousand Oaks General Plan, including the conservation element, in that the conditions have been applied to minimize impact from the removal of the oak trees with the inclusion of conditions. With inclusion of conditions, four replacement trees would be added to the city's overall tree canopy. And lastly, with the inclusion of the recommended conditions, approval of this request will not be contrary to or be in conflict with the general purpose and intent of the Oak Tree Ordinance, Chapter 22, Title IX of the Municipal Code, the Oak Tree Preservation and Protection Guidelines Resolution Number 2010-14. In terms of evaluation, based on the arborist reports, the applicant's testimony, and the site constraints, no other viable options are available to remedy the adverse conditions caused by the subject trees. A monetary payment equivalent to the market rate will be made to the Open Space Conservation Fund, Oak Tree Preservation, which is allowed by the Oak Tree Preservation and Protection Guidelines. In terms of SEQA, this does have clearance, exempt pursuant to Section 1504, Class 4, minor or private alterations, landscaping, as long as it's not scenic, is allowed. Recommendation, therefore, is that Planning Commission approve OTP 2020-70547 based on the findings and subject to the recommended conditions contained in the attachment. And just to, and I did state that I was going to mention what this was, but it was a, the fungus here that's in question, that's also in the tree report, is a, well, I don't have it right in front of me, but it's a Phytrupropha. Anyway, it's genus, and basically, it's a fungal, it's a fungal plant, or a fungus that attacks underneath the bark and works its way up to branches and leaves as well. And that concludes the presentation. Thank you for listening. I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much, Senior Planner, Ms. Arslan. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Everybody nodding at me. I will go with Commissioner Newman first, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Slim, for your report. Regarding the third tree, Tree WOT3, when is the testing scheduled to occur, and when will the results of that test be available?
Thank you for that question. In conversation with the applicant, and I, yeah, I do see him here today, they could probably respond to that, they discussed holding off on the lab test. They will follow through if need be. They feel that based on the evidence provided in the two arborist reports and some of the observations that they've had, that the tree is certainly in decline and does have that pathology, again, without the benefit of the lab report, but I believe they will follow through. So that hasn't been determined yet.
The lab test, whether there will be testing has not been determined yet?
Right. They haven't said, you know, definitively if they actually are going to go. I think what happens tonight will have a bearing on that action.
Okay, so with regard to the staff's position, there are two reports from independent arborists, the city commissioned, I presume. The first one essentially repeated the applicant's report findings about Tree 3 and said, well, the applicant's report says it's diseased, so, yeah, and based on the applicant's finding, I think it should come out. The other report from Mr. Innis had a different viewpoint. It supported the removal of Trees 2 and 6, but said that there was not evidence pending a lab test, there was not yet evidence to support the removal of Tree 3. And my question is, what is staff's position here? Because we've got some conflicting information around this.
Okay, well, you are correct. And frankly, staff is technologically not in a position, we're not arborists, so we can't make that determination. What we can do is take the pieces that we do have and try to, you know, sew together an appropriate conclusion. And again, based on, you know, the, I guess, the differing opinions, professional opinions, like as you would have with the medical opinion, and my observations that I saw, I, again, it doesn't matter if I say I personally feel like, yeah, it's a likely disease, although it might not, the disease might not have progressed thus far, and it might be a long period of time, maybe years, maybe 10 years before something happens. But I can say for sure.
Trees are not people, but if they were, and we said, well, that person is likely to do something that merits a death sentence in 10 years, so let's kill him now, we'd probably want to have some evidence before making that determination. Now, you did have some other findings here. I mean, you did say some other adverse things about the tree, such as the structure of the branches and the split and things that could happen. And even Mr. Innis did state that the existence of the lawn, he said, one, that I hadn't realized, that's a violation of the city's oak tree ordinance, and that, two, more importantly for our discussion, it's a vector for spread of this disease. So I guess to ask a question around this, is it staff's position that sufficient evidence exists for staff to support the removal of Tree 3?
If I can just jump in here, the recommendation from staff is to have lab tests performed so we can verify that the tree does have the fungi. And that's by condition in the recommended resolution. So we would want that lab result to demonstrate that it does actually have the fungi.
Okay, so I guess my final question then is around process, is how does this happen? Is there an enforcement mechanism or something that could require that test to happen and something to get a positive result from that test before Tree 3 is removed?
Right, right. So we would require the applicant to submit the lab results to us for review, and if it does demonstrate that it has the disease, we would authorize removal at that point.
Okay, so just so I understand, then, I think my reading the condition says the tree cannot be removed until a positive result from a lab test is submitted to the city.
That is correct.
That's correct.
Is that a correct reading?
That's correct, yeah.
Thanks very much. Nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Newman. Commissioner McMahon?
Yes, that lab test that you're suggesting, will it show how much of the fungus is in there? Is it like a continuum? Is it something that will show that, well, it's just a little bit infected and the tree may have another 10, 20 years? Or will it say, it's diseased, get it out of there?
So I could only offer this as an explanation. This is based on the research that I had done. The progression of that fungus, I mean, the only way to do that is, would be to test it in a couple of different sections. One is in the root system, and then a section of the bark, and then perhaps, you know, up further up, maybe, and you actually take some of the leaves, like that yellowing that we saw, and then actually put that under, like, lab microscope, grow the culture, see if actually does have the presence of the fungus. The issue, though, is, again, this is based on mine, and I'm not an arborist, but if it does start in a root system and it's actually gotten into the bark, there's really no way to take that back. Again, and it could be years down the road before it really starts choking up enough of the tree where there is, you know, a massive failure of structure. So that's all I really have as far as that. That's my understanding.
One more question. You showed us a picture where the tree had been cut, you know, by a person. Would that cut have to have a permit pulled for that?
Again, I'm not an arborist.
Well, according to Thousand Oaks Oak Tree Ordinances, did they need to get a permit for that?
They did get a permit.
They did get one?
Yeah, there was a permit for that, for that tree. Any branch that's over 2 inches in diameter requires, any live branch over 2 inches in diameter requires an oak tree permit.
And there was a permit pulled for that?
There was.
Okay, thank you. I'm done.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Commissioner Link?
Thank you, Chair Bus. Since this is my first time at the rodeo on the oak tree preservation, I just had a, well, had a couple of questions on the actual ordinance itself. Nine, never mind what section it is, what constitutes an encroachment into the drip line?
Any work activity to or around a tree. So within five feet, five feet outside the drip line is the protective zone inclusive to the trunk?
Okay.
Or 15 feet, whichever is.
Any kind of activity, construction or otherwise?
Yeah, anything.
So on that same vein, what was the improvement that was shown within the arborist's report with the temporary orange fencing around the tree?
So that, they actually had a, it was an older deck, dilapidated deck, so I believe that deck was removed. In addition, they also, and this is again per the arborist report that was submitted with that permit, they had to install an eration system for the root system because they were going to put sod over it. They actually had to provide a, basically, a manufactured network of tubes to allow air to get to the root system.
Okay.
And that's what, that was part of that fencing and also the removal of that decking, I believe that was the case.
So is that new decking, at least the papers that we saw in the exhibits, are those actually within the drip line?
So the new, they actually had, I think, wooden decking that was taken out, and then they had paving over that, so, or paving in place. But that's what was being removed, I think that's what the fence was, was for that area, for that work in that area, removing that decking and placing in the eration system.
Okay, so that new decking, the new concrete decking that we saw in your photographs?
That would be around 2A.
That's around 2A?
Yeah, 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 that's right.
Okay. Let's see. And the new pool, it looks like there was, I did a little research online, went through Zillow and saw the photographs when the house was sold, I believe in 2015, but there was an original pool on the side. It looks as though that pool has been removed since and replaced with a new pool?
Yes, sir.
When was that work done?
I believe that was 2018, if that's correct. 2018, they also had a counterpart, an oak tree permit for that as well, so, for the encroachment, I believe, for those oak trees a lot nearer to the, or that oak tree nearer to the pool. If you see it on the map, it's that one all the way to the sort of south-east corner.
Okay. And does the city have any record of other trees being removed from the property since its construction?
We would, honestly, would have to look at the cases, because there are at least three cases in current history, one in 2016 and two in 2018. I have those here, and they do talk about removing. I have those here, and they do talk about removal of WOT1, encroachment in four, and I think a few others, I think some of these trees were also encroached on. And so, yeah, there's record of that, at least, that I'm aware of.
Three trees, at least. Three trees that have been removed in recent history?
I believe that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lanson, last but not least.
Thank you, Chairboss. Mr. Slum, I just had a few follow-up questions. Obviously, my other commissioners did a great job, I just had a few. As to the removal of at least two and possibly three of the trees, is going to change any waterway or grading issues in any kind of nominal, or any kind of substantial way?
I don't believe so, and none of that was actually called out in the two arborist reports, in this case, the three arborist reports, so there was no mention of that. In fact, and just since you did mention waterways, the geography, the topography of the backyard, as I visited, it is, there is quite a bit of, there's some pooling, some depression around some of these trees. So with that, I would also put out there that if there was a rainfall, I think what would happen is there would be some water that would pool around these trees. Trees are known to suck up, as, you know, hundreds and hundreds of gallons. This is immediately after, within 10 to 15 minutes after a rainstorm. And with that, I think they'll be taking up a lot of that water, and with those branches, that also may be another consideration, but no changes to any waterways, nearby waterways.
But as you indicated, if the trees are gone, wouldn't the water then flow to some other part of the backyard? And I guess the question being is, would that create an issue?
That's a great question, and I don't know, you know, there would have to be something, I would imagine, to mitigate for that, if it does, you know, if there is a significant amount of rainfall.
Okay, I will ask the applicant about that. You indicated, or there was in the package, there were three comments from community members that you, I guess, sent out information you never heard back from. I just want to confirm that was accurate, you never heard back from those three people?
That's correct. I mean, as I stated, generally, they weren't happy about the tree coming out. But as I explained, I think a couple items, one was, there was at least two here out of necessity, the third is again questionable, right? But also moreover, that removing these trees was going to basically require a payment into the open space, and that would allow us to, again, acquire more open space, and potentially plant things down the road, and an opportunity for new trees to be placed somewhere where they will, you know, flourish and won't be interrupted. That was sufficient, I think.
Let me ask a question, because this hasn't come up before, that I've been on the commission. Why not, I guess, we can't force them to plant trees in public property, so that's why the donation?
That is correct, I think for a number of reasons. You know, if something's not planned now, or it's not the right timing, having that, having those funds in a, or having the money in a fund ready to go to execute at a time that's appropriate, I think is what we're looking to do.
Okay, thank you. Chairboss, I have no further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Lanson. I just have one quick question. We've talked about WOT1 a couple of times now. There's a tree present there right now, and that there was a tree that was removed at some point. Is that a replacement tree, is that what we're talking about? And when did that happen?
No, I think I may have misspoke, I know WOT2, not 2A, O2 was removed, and W01 may have been pruned, but, and it also may have been mislabeled, but on the tree map that I showed, I took a picture of it, that tree, you know, they're on either like bookends of the lot. You've got the one big oak tree, I believe, to the north, and then you have the two sycamores on the south end of the property, along the facade, along the frontage.
Okay, that makes more sense to me. I actually went physically to the property this morning. I did meet the applicant when I was there, just for full disclosure. So, yeah, so, okay, that makes more sense to me, because I was like, that tree didn't look newish.
No, it's not.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right, then we'll move on now. Thank you, and now we ask for the applicant and applicant's representative to speak. You will have 15 minutes. You come up over here to the dais. And the applicant is, applicant's representative is Ryan Baker with Distinguished Creations, and Catherine Wolf is the applicant herself. You're right there, and your mic is live, and you have 15 minutes, thank you so much.
The original project started with, you know, I guess in 2016 or 2017, the original home was built with a pool, and if you look on the Zillow pictures, and I have some of them here, if you want to see them, the original pool was built right up and around these existing trees. The hardscape of the old pool, the pool itself, was built directly and specifically around WOT3. They started a project, they demoed the pool about 2017 with a permit, and then it was about two years that the applicant went through a divorce. So, the project sat for a very, very long time. In 2018, we had oak tree encroachment permit, 2018-704408, issued to allow us to rebuild. Then the only place we could, which is where the old pool previously was, between the main house and WOT3. Want this on there? That work for you? So that's from the Zillow photos, and that's WOT3, which is really the one in question. You can see the hardscape around the tree. And that's from the original home that was built, not her project. Here's another picture from Zillow. You can see the concrete deck more this way, that covers a lot, a lot larger portion of the yard than what we proposed with her new pool and the pool deck. So in order to build the pool and the pool deck the way that we have it now, we did have to put in that breathing system underneath the grass and underneath the concrete deck, which is a breathing system that was, you know, from a city spec, from the city of Agora and the city of TO. We used them both because Richard Campbell is our consultant, who also works for the city of TO. So you have the breathing system that was put in with, I think Nazir has other pictures of it. Then it has 25 tons of gravel over it, filter fabric, and then the pool deck on top of it, which is part of our original pool permit, that let us put the pool deck near that tree, so it could breathe. The question that we have about WOT3, and about the lab results and the testing, is that the project has been about a year and a half. We submitted for this tree permit September 17, 2020. And I don't remember, who was the first consultant that came out, the first city arborist?
That would have been Campbell, so Richard Campbell.
Well, Richard Campbell's...
Oh, sorry, no, I'm sorry, I meant Greg Ainsworth.
So Richard Campbell has been our consultant for, you know, the life of the project. We had to have our job start meeting with Richard Campbell, with John Burke, who's the landscape architect for the city, to make sure that all of our work within the protected zone was monitored by Richard Campbell. And he's been there when we had to dig the pool and put in the breathing system, and the city's come out and inspected all that, to make sure that we were in compliance. So we haven't been trying to remove this tree. But from the original report in 2016 with WOT1, and then 2018, and then 2020, which is this report, his rating on the tree has gone down from a C to a D minus. So, and we've spent, I don't know, $20,000 on the breathing system for the tree, as his reports say, the tree is in permanent decline. So that was a little bit frustrating. And then it's been about six months since we submitted for the permit to remove the tree. The project is almost finished. Whoever the new arborist was, came out, wants us to dig up the yard again, test the roots again. This is today, the first time anyone's been in the pool. And this is really the branch in question that Nazir is talking about? That is at a 90-degree angle that hangs over this pool? She doesn't really want to dig up the yard again. She doesn't want to extend this project again. It's more of a liability concern for her, that, you know, they're going to have 40 kids in this pool. The tree is never, ever going to grow at a different angle, it's never going to get lighter. And we really don't want to put her through any more of it. You know, I think WOT2 and WOT6 are kind of self-explanatory. If our department wants one out, the other one is obviously diseased. Richard couldn't be here today, but he says, you know, the slope of the yard from WOT2 to 3 is downhill. The fungus is in the soil, and it's going towards the creek. It will die eventually. And our concern is that, you know, the liability of her kids, or that tree, or that branch, is not the same as, "How long will the tree live"? Do you have anything?
You good? Do you have anything else?
Do you have any questions for us?
Okay, if you're comfortable, I can go ahead and open it up to Commissioner Questions for you, if that's acceptable? Okay. I will start with Commissioner Lanson, if he'd like, since I used him last.
Yeah, thank you, Chairboss. Just to follow up on the question I had for staff, in terms of if two and three are removed, in terms of the waterway, as you said, it would go down to the creek, is there anything you're going to put in its place to make sure that there's not a change in terms of the water course, of what the hillside would be?
So, when we did this project, we actually hired M3 as our civil engineer. They're also the engineer of record for the HOA, they monitor the creek. They go through the creek every year for the HOA, they find the city, or they, you know, they find residents if they do anything along the creek that they're not supposed to do. So we have drainage in place that's designed by him, that goes from the yard all the way to the creek. So the drainage isn't an issue.
Are those plans part of what you submitted to the city, so it's something they reviewed? Or is that above and beyond, I'm assuming maybe city review, I don't know, if that goes to you or the city?
I mean, the yard drainage was in place before, from the grass area that was there, that goes all the way down into the creek. And then we had to have drains for downspouts, drains around the pool, and that's all tied in together. And the trees are on an existing slope, so the water is all shedding towards the creek and the branca. So there won't be any pooling where the trees are now.
One thing you mentioned, there was an HOA involved. Is there some HOA approval you have to get, or has that already been provided?
I mean, we had the HOA approval for, when we got the city permit, for the pool and all the work that's going on now, the HOA has to approve before we can even submit.
Do they have to end up giving an approval for the removal of the trees, or is that's not something that they evaluate?
That's from the city, not the HOA.
Okay, thanks, I have no further question.
Thank you, Commissioner Lanson. Commissioner McMahon?
Yes, I have a question, and it really doesn't necessarily pertain to this issue, but you were talking about the one diseased tree slopes down to the one that is suspected of being diseased. And I did also go out to the property today, and it looks like it would go further downhill to the branca.
Right.
Is there a concern that that disease is going to spread to all those beautiful trees down there?
It is, I mean, Richard Campbell said that it's pretty prevalent in the area. There's probably, I mean, you guys were there, there's probably 15 more oak trees along the branca that, you know, are probably right on the other side of her property line, but she probably has 20 large trees on the property. And he said, you know, that they could all end up with the same fungus, or they could already have it. But the danger of them falling, you know, into the yard, or the way that they're leaning now is more towards the creek, so it's not really a safety concern.
But what about, is there a way to prevent them from getting it, if they haven't gotten it?
Not that I know of. I mean, there's a lot of oak trees in the, basically, the common area on either side of her property that also, you know, don't look like they're in great condition. This is a little bit further down Hollyhock. It's just an area that, you know, we've had some guys doing some cleanup just because of the condition of the yard. That's down Hollyhock, and this is on the other side. You can see that? That's not on her property, it's just on either side. And it looks like, you know, the branches are rotting, they're falling off, they're on the ground, but it's not physically on her property, so, I mean, there's not a lot that we can do about it. But there is, you know, and I'm not an arborist, I don't know what those trees, what happened to those trees. But they're not all in great shape.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Commissioner Newman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Barry, you showed some pictures of a breathing apparatus. Do I understand correctly that, was that, well, let me ask, was that installed, was it dedicated to try to preserve tree number three, or was it for other purposes as well?
It was conditional for us to put the pool and the pool deck in the grass in. We didn't get the permit without that breathing system. So that was specked by Richard Campbell, and it was part of our, it was part of our tree permit that allowed us to get the pool permit.
What I'm asking is, was that requirement for the breathing system dedicated or specifically tied to tree number three, or was it required just in general?
It's specifically tied to tree number three because of the proximity of the pool and the pool deck to the tree. The pool deck does cover where the roots would need oxygen, because the roots need oxygen, not water. So that allows the tree to breathe underneath the pool deck and the grass, which is the only way that we could get the pool permitted. But there's nowhere else that it could fit on the property, and that's where the previous pool was. So to get it permitted, that was a condition of our permit.
So hypothetically, if Tree 3 were not there, you're saying the breathing apparatus would serve no purpose?
Right, if the tree's going to die anyway, or if it's a hazard and we're going to remove it, it's just that it took, it would have taken so long with COVID and everything else to try to stop the project and say, "Okay, the tree's going to die anyway, or it's a hazard to kids in the pool, we don't want to pay for the breathing system", the project would have sat for another year. So we had to put it in, in the course of trying to get to this process, to talk about it, but it's already installed.
And by the same token, if you were putting in a similar pool and pool house on a different property that did not have this tree, you're saying you wouldn't need this?
Absolutely not.
All right, all right. Coming back to the test, there was some question in the staff report whether a lab test, as recommended by the city's arborist, would even be conducted. Now, in the conditions for the approval of the permit to take out the three trees, there's two conditions of interest here. One is the one that, as staff testified, requires a lab test. And another is a boilerplate paragraph, called the signed acceptance of conditions, that basically says, "We agree to whatever the other conditions are." And so I just, I want to ask, just to be sure, if we do go ahead and vote to remove all three trees, are you okay with accepting that condition, that a lab test be done?
The hard part about that is, the first city arborist that came out also wanted the roots dug up. We paid Richard Campbell to come out, they did some air digging thing that doesn't damage the roots, so that the first arborist could see the roots. And that was months ago, before we even had to go to a type D permit. So we did that with the first city arborist, and we thought that we were through that. And now, we have the aeration system on top of a large part of the root system. We have it where we put down sod, because that was the condition of the pool permit, and we did everything that we were supposed to do that. And now we're basically being asked, okay, we have another city representative, you know, that wants the same, wants us to do the exact same thing, and dig up the yard again. She's hoping not to do that. She's hoping that, you know, the safety concern of kids in the pool, and the way the tree is leaning over the pool, and the fact that we've covered, you know, half of the root system with a breathing system, digging all that up, is...
Okay, well, I'm going to be the 17th person in the room to say I'm not an arborist.
Yes.
However...
I have multiple reports, though.
However, I am a planning commissioner. And the question before me tonight, and the other commissioners here, and virtually, is whether we are, the question we are being asked to vote in approval or denial of is whether these conditions are okay, and whether we accept them. And that also works for you as the applicant as well.
Of course. Of course.
So that isn't exactly a yes, we will accept the conditions if we approve it. You seem to be saying, we really don't want to do this test. I don't know, as a non-arborist, whether a test even requires digging up the ground. There may be some other way of doing it. I don't know. But, but the question put to me is, if I vote for this, I'm voting for something that requires a lab test. And I'm asking, are you okay with that test? Because that's, that's the question we've been asked about. We can amend it, we could change it, but I'm asking whether you're okay with the condition as is.
We're really not okay with the test. And, you know, the reason that we're not on board with the test is that it was asked that we do it once before. And our tree permit process has been seven months long. The second arborist that came out from the city came out May 5th, like six months into us trying to get a permit. We've already posted, you know, for our hearing. We finally get another arborist that shows up that wants us to do the same thing. The liability issue of, you know, this one branch that grows at a 90-degree angle and extends all the way out over the pool, that falling off and hitting kids or damaging the structure or anything else, I think was more of an issue than whether the roots have it or not considering, you know, with the other trees.
Yeah, I've got that part. I'm asking specifically about the lab test and I think you're saying, no, you're not okay with a lab test. Is that, is that an accurate reading?
She's not okay with tearing it up again and not being done with this again and...
Okay. Because if we do vote for this as is, I want to be very clear, as is, we can discuss changing it and we can reopen the hearing and draft other language and all that, but the question presented to us tonight requires a lab test. And if I understand you correctly, I just want to make sure I understand your view. You're saying, no, you are not okay with that lab test. Is that, is that an accurate statement?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, Richard Campbell couldn't come tonight. He's, you know, he made it very clear that he's been there with the other arborists, not the most recent one, that the fungus is in the soil, you know, it's going to be in the tree where we have to dig it up and find it. We've covered half of the tree roots with concrete and a breathing system. I'm not sure what happened with the first city arborist that came out and the first time we already paid to dig up the roots. I don't know what happened with, we asked to see that report and said it was for your eyes only. And, you know, just...
It's now, you know, I realize this is a small consolation for you, but it is that both reports, three reports, Mr. Campbell's
Right.
And the two from the city are a matter of public record. They are part of the
Of course.
Agenda packet that was released to the public last week. Now, I realize you've been at this much longer
Yes.
Than the past five days when, since we got it.
I know that you guys didn't see it until Thursday or Friday or something.
Correct.
It was new to everyone here. So it's, you know, it's at a point where we're trying to get her back into a house and the neighbors really, really, really want us to be done with this project. Everyone wants us to be done with this project and we've, we've been dealing with tree consultants and these trees and doing what we needed to around these trees for, since 2018. So to have to dig this up again, to prove that it has the fungus or not is, is a problem for her.
It's a hardship, is your position?
It's, it's a hardship and, you know, today was the very first day that she sent me pictures of the kids in the pool. I was, I was out there today. I met Mr. Bass. We've been talking about the trees. Nobody's been in the pool. The kids haven't been in the pool for four years. But to see her under that huge branch, she's like, I don't really care about the test. I don't want this tree, you know, as a liability near the pool, near all these kids. They're going to entertain all the time.
I understand the concern, but, but without, I don't want to seem crass when I say this, but that's not the question before us.
Right.
Question before us is a legal one, is are we in acceptance of these conditions? And, and if we don't like the conditions, we'll have a discussion about that. We might draft other language or not, but, but I think I understand quite well now. I appreciate your clarifying what your position is. I've got it. I understand what you're saying and I thank you for that.
One thing, I mean, some of the conditions that the planning commission has for removal of an oak tree isn't only lab testing to prove it has, if it has a disease or not, correct? It could be, it could be, you know, liability to pedestrians or people or structural damage or there's other categories that aren't just the lab test to take into account whether you guys approve the removal of a tree.
The question before us tonight is whether we accept the conditions. It's not whether, we don't, here in the planning commission, saying, you hear this saying a lot. We implement policy, we don't make policy.
If I may intercede, Commissioner Newman?
Please.
I think that we've established what their position is and I don't think we need to go any further than that.
I concur.
If you have any additional questions, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Link?
I do have, I do have one more for you.
There's still two more of us. I apologize. I know it's a long time up there.
Go ahead.
Was there any consideration given for replacing the pool in a different location in the yard?
Because of the WOT2 and where WOT3 are, there was nowhere else the pool could go than where the previous pool was.
So not the large open space toward the northeast corner of the property?
I wasn't involved at the time, but I know that WOT1 was over there somewhere and was hazardous condition tree. So I don't think when this, when this conversation started that another location was viable.
Okay. Understood. Thank you.
All right. The only questions I've got are, the initial soil test, when that was done, you said you had to dig up. I have it in my head as a layperson, I will be the 18th person to say I am not an arborist. It is not somebody walking out with a test tube, scraping a little bit and walking away, apparently. Apparently this is a fairly invasive process.
Yeah, they dig it up with something called air hammers. So they're really blowing the dirt out of the way of the roots. You don't have a chance to damage the root system itself. And the first arborist that the city sent out asked Richard to dig up the roots before so he could physically see them. And they, we paid Richard to do that. He hired a company. The arborist came out and looked at it. We never saw the report. They didn't do a lab test on him. He just wanted to physically see, you know, some part of the root system. And I'm not an arborist. So all I, all I know is, is that we paid someone $1,800 to blow air, blow the dirt out of the way with air and then Richard and the first arborist looked at it.
Okay. And now at this point, the area or a good portion of the area that would require that is now covered, right?
It's, yeah, we have, you know...
It's under cement, so this would require
Right, we have breathing system everywhere.
Not just an air hammer, but a jackhammer as well.
Yeah.
Copy that.
And, and to get to the root system, it's under the breathing system, under 20 tons of gravel and filter fabric in the PVC to find where the disease would be, you know, visible.
Copy that. Okay. Yeah, so that makes, that makes significant sense to me.
And even when we asked, when we asked Richard, like, is it just dig up any root and test any root? He's like, no, we have to find, you know, where it was chewed on by an animal, where it's oozing, we have to find some part of the root system that's visibly damaged and test that location because the tree will compartmentalize around certain areas. So it's not like dig up one root where there's dirt and we don't have to tear up the yard. It's keep digging until we find what we're looking for.
That makes sense because my other question was going to be, it's a sizable tree, so because, you know, you could, you could probably test one far, far wrong and not be certain about another.
Right.
It's probably very similar to checking cancer in humans. When you do a full MRI, you do a full, full scan of the body.
Yeah, it wasn't, I try, I'm like, okay, well, there's one portion of the yard that, you know, is brown. Can we dig that up? And he's like, it doesn't work that way.
And my understanding is, is that this tree was sick prior to you beginning all of this, this work is what you've established, right? You said this, this tree was a C minus?
Yeah, I mean, when, when we had the original encroachment permit submitted in, you know, 2017, I think in Richard's first report, when they submitted to trim other branches and other stuff, this tree had a rating. It was before I was involved and right after they bought the house. But it had a rating and then when we supplied for, you know, when we applied for the pool permit, it had a rating and then recently we did this. It's three reports that Richard Campbell did and, and the rating declines in all of them.
Copy that. And this is despite the fact that you added an aeration system to it?
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you see the Zillow pictures, 25 years ago, it had concrete around the entire tree without, you know, and I don't know what causes this fungus. I don't know if it's a lack of oxygen, you know, from the original builder. But the, the tree itself was encroached on when whoever built the original house.
Okay.
Which, which they tore all that decking out.
You got it. That answers all of my questions. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
You're good to go. You guys may be seated.
Thank you.
We're going to go to public comments at this time. And we have, I don't see it on my screen, so I'm going to have to go with, we have... Sorry, minor, minor technical difficulty. We will go to public comments. We have two public speakers this evening. Each speaker will have five minutes to speak. And we will begin with Randall Witt.
Hi. I moved into the area in the 1990s or right around 1990s and I will be about the 20th person to say tonight that I'm not an arborist as well. However, I joined the HOA board dealing with our three miles of arroyos in about 1993. And I've been dealing with those arroyos since, from 1993 to the present. I have a pretty good sense as to how the arroyo system works. As a result of working with civil engineers and geologists and the like on the slopes and with city oak tree people as well as other arborists relating to the stabilization of the slopes around the arroyo systems and their dependence for their stabilizations on oak trees, willows, toayans, sycamores and a variety of other trees, most of which are invasive that are in the arroyo system that we're battling. In any case, I also deal with the maintenance crews that deal with the water flow in that system. So my point is, oh, on top of that, as a little side coincidence, I formed the North Ranch CERT, Community Emergency Response Team, and worked closely with the fire department on that. So I have a certain knowledge as to what fire department requirements are as well. But in any case, I, as I said, I am from the HOA and we, one of the things we do is review landscape plans and we review architectural plans. Why we were never consulted to review these landscape plans, especially since the runoff from these trees or from these, these lawns that were placed around these trees dramatically and directly impacts the arroyo and that the water runs off from these lawn areas down the Baranca towards our existing oak trees which align and stabilize the arroyo. Why we were not consulted on this, I'm not exactly sure. That said, I would be more than happy to meet with M3 Civil, the people that you quoted, because they do do our walkthroughs. I've gone through probably 10 or 12 walkthroughs of the entire three mile arroyo system with them. And I think if we met together, the applicants, the homeowners association and the civil engineers who look at the Baranca, it would be productive before you guys make a decision on these trees. I also have, in looking at the pictures, seeing lawns going right up to the trunks of oak trees and seeing roses planted in the front of, right next to other oak trees and touching them, kind of a sense that it's almost like, and I'm not saying the applicants put them here, but maybe the previous owners did, where you have a situation where you've done something that is not appropriate, but by the same token, you, you are saying that, you know, you may have killed your mother and father, but you're pleading for the leniency of the court on the basis of the fact you're an orphan. If you damage these trees and create a problem which eventually goes to the Baranca, yeah, I'm sorry, I...
You're good, you're good. They gave you short on time. I was just trying to say something.
Okay, got it. And you impact trees that are in the Baranca. I, I'm struggling to see how we come out whole, given the job that the city has tasked us to do maintaining the Baranca. So again, my request for you guys tonight would be to allow the applicant and the homeowners association to meet with the engineer that they've used, that we've used for over 30 years and discuss the issue and try and find out the best situation we're all of us concerned. The last thing relates to the oak tree, which I get them all mixed up, but the one that's over the roadway, which I guess is number six. Wrong picture here. They put a, they took a picture of a moving truck in the street. I'm going to just add this truck which was there today. And in that situation, what I would propose, other than the fact that two fire trucks can pass side by side, because as I measured that branch up above and to the left of that truck, it was 170.5 inches today. A fire truck is 13 feet, 6 inches or about 162 inches, which gives it eight inches of clearance, 20 feet from the edge, the far edge of the roadway. So two fire trucks could pass in a situation like that, but even if you don't want to sign off on that, where this line is here, we could cut the tree limb right before that limb that points upwards and then preserve the tree to some extent and keep it entirely out of the roadway, which is an option for not removing that entire tree.
You got it. Thank you, Mr. Witt.
Have any questions?
Mr. Witt, your city of residence is, I forgot to ask you at the beginning.
City residence?
Yes.
Oh, I'm in the same homeowners association they are. Westlake Village?
Westlake Village.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, if I may, before you step down, Mr. Witt, if, if there were a meeting, as you're proposing, between the HOA and the applicant, what would, in your mind, what would be a positive or constructive outcome of that meeting? What would change from what we're considering tonight?
I would think that one good option would be to find out if this tree, which is swallowing so much water as was discussed here, could stay and was not infected, to permit it to continue to swallow that amount of water during a rainfall and not drain...
This is tree, tree number three you're referring to?
That's number three. And not have it drain into the Baranca to, you know, create an erosion issue. That would be number one. Number two, you know, I get a little lost down there when I'm down in the arroyo because as I look on the city of Thousand Oaks mapping, there are essentially two lines. The fence line they put in has five jogs in it. It strikes me, at least from my GPS, that the fence line is a little bit more towards homeowners' property as opposed to their property. It's not, it's almost, it's definitely not on the property line. So I'm a little bit lost, but, you know...
And to be clear, a border dispute is not, is not in our purview.
No, 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 but I'm, you know, in terms of erosion issues,
Yes.
I'm not sure where the erosion issue would be assisted by this tree because I, you know, I need to kind of get a sense as to where exactly the property line is and to know how much of an impact they're having on our, the walls of the Baranca.
Okay. So, so bottom line, you're hoping there could be a meeting and that one outcome from that meeting would be a way to...
To at least walk the property with M3 Civil to find out whether or not that oak tree 3 can be saved, number one, whether or not, and maybe meeting with a fire department to decide whether or not we can cut that tree there right at the edge of the road, worst case scenario, if that's what they're up for. And then that tree can stay and grow from that point and probably grow more in an upright position. And then what can be done from a drainage standpoint in terms of minimizing the impact on the Baranca.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You got it, Commissioner Newman. All right, our next speaker is Kathy Schutz. Kathy Schutz, if you'll state your name and your city of residence prior to speaking, you will have five minutes. Senator Gorg.
Okay. Kathy Schutz. I live in Thousand Oaks, the Westlake Village portion of Thousand Oaks. And I'm the president of the homeowners association there and have been for several years. And I'm attending the meeting tonight to try to save a couple of oak trees. I had a call over the weekend from three homeowners on Hollyhock, which is one of the streets that borders this property. They didn't call me personally, they called our office. They didn't call me personally, they called our office. And they were concerned about the oak trees, and they are also concerned about a lot of construction that's been going on at this property for a long time, which I know is not anything you guys want to hear about. But I did get homeowner calls, and I also wrote a letter to Mr. Nazir, and there were several other letters that were written from people around the area about removing the trees and what reasons, et cetera, et cetera. So, from the staff report, and I'm not an arborist either, but I get it. WOT 2A, I get that tree maybe needs to be removed, I'm not sure, but from what I read, it sounds pretty bad. But WOT 3 is a multi-trunk tree. I can't imagine having to take that tree out, because there's no physical signs of a disease. They're just maybe. And this gentleman here was talking about maybe before, maybe, you know, something happens, well, don't you want to give it 10 more years if that's what it can take? So, the staff report actually stated there were no physical signs of disease, and it said the assessment of this tree was divided with respect to evidence of terminal disease, which means the experts couldn't come to a decision. And they did not find any disease in this tree, and it's a multi-trunk tree. So, I think we should try to save these trees. All the homeowners in the city are always talking to the city about their trees and how to prune them and everything, and I think we need to make an effort to try to save the trees however we can. And I also was looking at the staff report in regards to WOT 6. And that is not a diseased tree, as the staff report says. And it does partially hang over the roadway. However, why can't this tree be pruned? You prune oak trees at your home, you have to get a special permit from the city to prune them. We have to take it out? I mean, I don't get that. It just doesn't seem right. Why take out the whole tree? So, in conclusion, we'd like to see a concerted, this is the board, we'd like to see a concerted effort on the part of the city to save tree WOT 3 and WOT 6, because we know how important oak trees are at the Thousand Oaks. And these trees are important to everyone, so I hope you will consider that in your deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schutz.
Chair, boss, can I ask a quick question of her?
Yes, you may, sir. Commissioner Lanson.
If she can come back. We've had two people say they're talking on behalf of homeowners associations. I'm trying to figure out, is it the same HOA, or are there two different HOAs?
I couldn't hear him, is the question.
He's asking you, both public speakers are representing the same HOA?
Yes, yes.
They are the same HOA, sir.
Right. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. I believe we are done with public comments. So I would like to go back to staff for follow-up comments. Senior Planner Nizar, Slim?
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, I'd like to respond to WOT 6. I think there was some comments made. I have on the slides here basically the section 501 of the Fire Apparatus Access Standard. Now I want to just be clear about it. 4.1.1, Vertical Clearance, does state 13 feet 6 inches along the entire road width. So if you had a situation where there was somebody parked on one side of Holly Hawk, you'd have very limited room to get around it. You may have, you would be, may be forced to drive on the inside of the, or toward the inside of the lane closest to the lowest hanging portion of the limb. In the future, this thing's gonna continue to grow, and as the weight bears down on this branch, it'll continue to lower itself rather than be elevated. It was suggested to go ahead and cut the branch so that the roadway is clear. If you're, and I should have taken additional pictures, but I was out there. That trunk is really the main, one of the main trunks. If you cut that, really, I don't know if the tree would be viable. It'd be extremely unbalanced, for one, because it does grow at that very steep angle. And that's really all I have to say about that. I wouldn't want to guess the fire department if they are requesting, you know, that they have the 13 and 1/2 feet clear. Also, I think it was mentioned that, somebody said that you can get two fire trucks there. I don't see how that's possible. Also, different trucks vary in height. You may have a, like a more like a paramedic truck, like a, you know, go out to one side, and then you may have to drive a hook and ladder in case somebody's having a heart attack on the other side of town. I just don't want to be in a position to say that one is gonna be responding and not the other. We just don't know, and that's why you have to have the clearance that they're requesting. Lastly, for WOT 3, we're, again, we're taking this objective stance on, if we're gonna discuss a disease, we need something definitive in terms of, you know, we have a suspicion that's there. The other thing I'd like to offer is, I see WOT 3 as a two-pronged issue. One is the presence of disease, which will, you know, result in decline and lose that structural integrity. But in addition to that, we need to look at the form and the way that tree's been growing. I did mention a lot of lateral branches, branches that are going out very far, you know, further radius from the center. The multi-trunk tree as well, it's easy to find anything along, you know, on the internet that shows when you do have co-dominant trunks like that, sometimes they do split. Sometimes they don't, but I'm just saying, those are the issues there. And that's really the end of comments on that.
Thank you, sir. We're gonna go to Commissioner's questions for staff. Commissioner Newman looks very eager. We'll let you go first, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of questions. One that came up during the applicant's testimony. There was an assertion made that Mr. Campbell, the applicant's tree consultant, worked for the City of Thousand Oaks. Is that correct?
I believe, I believe, yeah, he's consultant.
Richard Campbell is a consultant of the city.
Okay, but so, just so we're very clear on this, in this hearing, his appearance is on behalf of the applicant.
Correct.
Not as, not, and so, what he's saying in his report is a statement by the applicant. It's not a statement by the city. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, the other is just what basis we have as commissioners for voting to remove or not remove trees. You mentioned form as another concern with tree number three. I'll ask a hypothetical here. If we take away the issue of disease, if we just have some tree somewhere that, the trunk goes straight up, but then this branch goes at 90 degrees over something that's just been built. Is that issue, the form issue alone, is that issue alone sufficient to allow commissioners to vote for removal of that tree?
I'm glad you asked that. A while ago, you asked, how does staff feel about the removal of WOT? So I want to phrase it this way. If we had a report that, if we had a report that showed a tree that was well-branched, extremely well-balanced, had good form, good structure, a good trunk that went up at least, you know, 12 feet before it started to branch out, and then there was claiming a disease issue, then we would absolutely want to see that, because there's no other reason to consider removal. We don't have that. I feel like we have these two issues. So we have a structural issue, a potential structural issue.
This is why I'm asking the form question in isolation. I'm not asking about a tree that is otherwise healthy, and then someone says, well, there may be disease. I'm asking, let's just isolate just the question of form alone, and ask if there's no other issue, and some hypothetical homeowner, I'm not saying the applicant's doing this. I'm just trying to understand what are and are not grounds for us. If a homeowner says, I've got this tree on my property, and it's got really lousy form, and so I want to take it out, is that a sufficient ground for us to vote for its removal?
I believe if it's substantiated by an arborist report, but I'm gonna allow...
Yeah, we would need some sort of report that demonstrates that the tree is dead or hazardous, and that's one of the criteria we use in approving oak tree permits. If there's no creeping in the soil, or there's no evidence of significant limb failure or disease, then we don't approve our oak tree permits. We don't allow the indiscriminate removal of trees.
Okay, so form by itself, you're saying, is not sufficient grounds for removal?
If it unbalanced a tree, if the tree is unbalanced because of the way it's growing, then that would be sufficient evidence, yes, but not...
If there's evidence of a hazard?
Yes, that's correct.
But just the nature of a tree going at an odd angle by itself is not sufficient ground?
That is correct, right.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I will move on to Commissioner Lanson.
I'll take that one step further and ask Mr. Slim or whoever else. Given this specific situation, if we take away the disease issue, does the staff believe there's a sufficient basis then for the removal of the tree?
You know, once again, I think I've answered this. Just based on observation of the direction of the trunks, the span of the trunk, or the branches that are there, given the event that there would be, like I said, a rainfall, again, in my mind, there is a potential for it to be more hazardous than a tree that didn't have that configuration, and that's really the extent of my comment. I can't go further than that, because again, there isn't enough testing, you know. I haven't done any tests, I'm not an arborist again, but yeah, so...
Let me ask the question, was the applicant, as part of their application for the removal of the tree, did they identify the branch being over the pool and potential hazardous issues, or was it only based upon a potential disease?
No, correct. That was, that was, one of the major concerns is that, you know, even though the pool was placed after the fact, and again, it was based on, that was, in their minds, the best place for the pool, and this is maybe an afterthought, but considering where the tree is, again, the span of the, the span of the branches and the canopy, the girth of the branches over that area where they and visitors may be recreating, they felt that's a concern. And they've actually reiterated that to me several times.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lanson. Commissioner Ling?
I just had one follow-up question for staff. The original tree report that was required for the encroachment permit, do you have the grade of WOT 3 at that time?
I only have the report, I'm sorry, the decision and not the arborist report. For the, we're talking about the one with the encroachment?
Yeah, from the very, very first encroachment when the pool was being constructed.
All right, so let's make sure.
Also, while you're looking that up, I too am not an arborist.
That's the theme tonight. You know, and I apologize, I don't have the original arborist report. What I did was only had access to was the decision that was rendered.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right. I have a question. Is there an arborist available to us at this moment?
We do not have one at the meeting, no.
All right, then we're, that's enough of that, then. I want to confirm what you said. WOT 6 is not prunable, because what we'd be pruning is the main branch of the tree, correct? And that would be nonsensical.
That's correct.
Two, I agree with your assessment of the fire department. Safety to firefighters is important to me. I have family members who are firefighters, I have friends who are firefighters. And I know from the fact that we've had a Thomas fire and a Woolsey fire, sometimes these fires spread to areas where we have populations, and their job is to protect their property and their lives, and I want to make sure that they have access. So that makes sense to me. The question I've got is, the tree that we're talking about, WOT 3, is in poor health, from what I'm understanding from reading these reports. And part of what they've done to mitigate that is to create airflow to those roots, potentially to try to save it. My question is, is how have previous hardscapes been placed over these trees? My understanding is the previous owner, and how are those approved by the city and by the HOA that exists over there? Do we have any control over that as a city? I mean, how often is this happening to trees that are on people's private property?
I think just one thing for clarification. The erosion system that was placed in there, I don't know if it was to remedy a suspected issue with the tree more than just providing it the air that it needed when you take up, you know, area from the pool. So it was not ready to remedy, but rather to mitigate, so that it would have sufficient oxygen.
So the previous hardscape was not an obstruction to the tree?
I beg your pardon?
The hardscape that was demolished, the previous existing hardscape, that wasn't an issue for the tree?
No, no, that, they claimed that that was potentially attributing to the issues that they have now. That's true.
Was that hardscape permitted by the city at some point in the past?
And that's the second question. I honestly don't know if that was permitted or not permitted. I know there was also an older deck that was around WOT 2, which, and I've got photos of that in the slide I can get to, but that was clearly just riddled with the fungus. And that was, a deck had been placed over that entire root system, and that was like an older, an older situation, so I don't know.
Okay, so I've, so my question, I guess, might be for Mr. Kearns. Do we have some kind of an inspection system for the trees that exist on private property? Are we verifying that private owners are being good stewards of these trees so that we don't run into these situations in the future?
Yeah, we don't have a proactive program where we go out and evaluate trees. If there is a request for improvements on the property that are within the, encroached within the protected zone of an oak tree, at that point, we do an evaluation, and we inspect the trees and the work methods and that type of thing, but not proactively.
So only, yeah, so only when we know somebody's making a change?
That's correct.
Okay, that makes sense. All right, yeah, because I was just curious. I mean, you know, we're finding ourselves in a position where we're looking at trees that, to some degree, based upon the arborist reports, are in decline in health or have issues. And I think, I suspect that some of it is because of the circumstances they grew in. Is that a correct assessment based upon what I'm reading, or am I reading too much into it?
Yeah, the reports acknowledge that that could be a contributing factor to the decline in health, yes.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we will follow up to the applicant. Do you have any rebuttals you'd like to make? Perfect. All right, so you'll have five minutes, Jasina.
Only because I have a few thousand pictures of this process. I don't know if you could see that. So that's WOT 6, and you can see where the tree is barely on her property. So at the street where the main trunk comes over is 128 inches, so talking about 10 foot 8. So trimming the tree at that location where Larry Williams from Ventura County Fire Department wants it leaves a stub of a trunk that's about eight feet long, and it's not a tree. We would just be cutting the trunk off and leaving the tree there. And as far as the planning commission process, this process for removing a tree... Sorry, sorry, sorry. I don't want to be insulting and read this if you already know it, but Richard Campbell gave it to me as far as, like, these are the conditions we have to meet. This is the hearing process, this is how they make their decisions. The standards for an oak tree permit may be approved based on one of the following findings by the decision-maker. The conditions of the trees with respect to disease, danger of falling, proximity to existing structures, high pedestrian traffic, areas such as parking lots, pedestrian walkways, interference with utility services, or is causing or likely to cause substantial property damage based on sufficient evidence and/or documentation, and said damage cannot be controlled or remedied through reasonable prevention and/or preventative procedures and practices. So that's all the decision-making on what, how you guys can decide on whether a tree can be removed or not. The fungus is only one of like 20. So that's just what he gave me as far as the planning commission process and how the decisions on removing oak trees in the City of Thousand Oaks is decided. And that's all.
Thank you very much. Do any commissioners have any follow-up questions for the applicant? No, there. Lanson? I think we're all good. I have a quick question for Mr. Hay here. Since we were discussing possibly altering, should we close the open meeting, discuss, reopen if we want to make a change, or should we...
I would recommend that you keep it open.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
And that is a point I did want to bring up, just because it was discussed about the conditions. I do want to state first that it is important that you, when you evaluate this case, that you realize that there are differences of opinion with the experts or the consultants that came in. So we do have three different reports. Two of them making, or one of them, obviously, for the applicant, stating the disease and the concerns. The second one kind of, or noting the first one, and then the third one, which we've talked about. And I know you understand that. I just want to bring it up again that you do have the options, because you have evidence from two different experts, if you will, or at least three experts, if you will. The second thing is, in regards to the conditions, and I think you probably referred to condition number four, certainly it's something you would modify. I would rather keep it open, so if you want to modify that condition, or any of the conditions...
So if you want to modify that condition or any of the conditions that, then you have to reopen it. So the, so the applicant, if it is something that's a change, could accept those conditions based on the change that you would have. So certainly, as you already stated tonight, it's within your purview to make condition changes if you wish. And we can certainly help you, our staff could certainly help you with those changes if you want.
You got it. So I'm going to leave it open if that's okay with my fellow commissioners. And I think that we should discuss item four real quick. And who, if anybody would like to lead off? Since you gave up after about 4 minutes 12 seconds, I will permit you to come back and tell us one more thing before we do this. Since we're going to be asking you questions again in a minute.
Because we both work with, with M3 Civil and Jacob. The, the civil engineer's requirement for drainage of the yard, the whole property slopes towards the creek. The drainage system, the only approved drainage system from the civil engineer that, that maintains the Branca is that the drains can't stop at the edge of her property and have all the water runoff run down into the creek. They have to be run underground and come out of the wall like three or four feet above the water. And that was a condition of our permit. So all the drainage for the yard is put in per M3 Civil. If it was to be run to the top of the yard and have all the water flow past all of the other trees, it could cause, you know, damage or transfer the fungus. But we've already installed it the way that they've asked.
Okay.
That's all.
Any commissioner have any questions on that? No, okay. All right, so I will let Commissioner Newman lead off.
This is really more of a question for fellow commissioners to kick off the discussion more than a comment. On the critical question, it seems to me is about the, the health of tree three. Or, yeah, tree three. The question I want to ask is what, what evidence are we considering here? I, in all of the reports, even though they have conflicting conclusions, I don't think any of them said there, there is positive evidence of fungus in tree three. I may have missed it, but I think I'm characterizing all three reports correctly. So I guess the question I'm raising is, absent evidence of disease at the moment in tree three, what other evidence should we be considering in looking at whether to remove or not remove that tree?
You good?
Yeah.
All right, Commissioner Lanson.
That's a question I'm, I'm asking.
Let's give Commissioner Lanson.
Thank you, Chair Bus. Along that line, I had kind of a procedural question as well. Is that if the applicant is now going to add an additional basis for removal of tree three based upon a health issue, and considering that the applicant is basically indicating they are not in agreement with the entirety of the application that we've been presented to vote on, my first thought is whether or not the applicant wants to continue this hearing to allow them to submit additional evidence as to tree three that would then give us that basis. Because right now I kind of have a problem in that that was not part of the materials as to that hazard issue.
I concur.
You concur?
I do.
All right. Commissioner Link?
I'd like to make one comment with that. For me frankly, the, the burden of proof would come, or the burden of proof, obviously, the onus is on the applicant with respect to removing the tree. And if the initial reasoning for that was for disease, then obviously we should have that report in front of us. Conflicting reports do not equal definitive answer. However, when we start talking about hazards and health, you don't usually get remediation from a situation that you've created for yourself. So if your concern was that the tree is going to hang over my pool, you should have known that prior to putting the pool in. So I would not consider that as a reason for removing tree three. So I, I don't know if that's necessarily answering Commissioner Lanson's question about whether we need to, you know, look into that or consider that as part of the removal or we go back and, and put the, put it back in the applicant's court and actually get this testing done for us to make that final decision. But that would be my.
So it's my understanding based upon what a senior planner said is that they did raise that issue multiple times with staff. Staff's recommendation is based upon the, the health issue. But that he acknowledged that the applicant has, has raised that subject. He said multiple times was my understanding.
The health of the tree or the hazard?
No, no, the hazard issue.
A hazard issue.
Did, did anybody else perceive that? Did you say that, sir?
Yes, and I did, I did mention it as an afterthought because Commissioner Link, you are correct in terms of they located the pool, you know, prior to the tree's existence. And the tree was there, they located the pool there. And I did say that it was as an afterthought, after further considering kind of the, the potential dynamics of the tree and the, the pool placement, that they were concerned about, about it being an issue.
Okay. But at the time they issued the pool permit, they were doing mediation to try to save the tree that was in poor health, correct?
Right, and they figured it was okay for, for that scenario.
Because, because my understanding is, is they saw a sick tree. They thought they were taking out the hardscape. They thought they were going to fix it with this, this, this thing they were doing. And now they're getting a report saying the tree's in worse condition than it was before. And so that's why they're concerned. That's, that's what I'm hearing. If you're hearing something different, I understand.
No, and I hear that as well. I, the, in bringing up the issue of whether this tree is going to fall into the pool is sort of the situation, again, that's a situation you've created by putting your pool immediately underneath a branch that may or may not fall down.
But it's because the city told them the tree was in good enough health to rescue and then told them what to do to fix it. And that's not happening. Now the city's telling them that tree is sick. It's going to die a year from now, a decade from now.
Is it their applicant that's saying that it's sick? Because the city's.
Oh yeah, city's saying, test it and show me.
Right.
Yeah.
So I, I think that's the direction we need to go.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I mean, is the city saying it's sick? I didn't, I didn't see that, I didn't see that finding in, in either of the two.
City is saying, show me, you're right.
Yeah. The city, one of, one of this, one of the city, there are two reports from the city. One of them essentially quotes what the applicant's report said. And the second one said, we need more, we need more evidence.
I think the problem I'm running into is that I, I, we don't have an arborist here. And so I saw our, our senior planner's pictures where he's showing us, you know, yellowing of, of leaves and, and stuff like that. And we actually don't have the professionals here.
So the reason, the reason my first question to staff was when, when this test would be done. And then my surprise to hear there might not be a test was, was my second question was going to be, then why are we here? Why are we having this meeting now? Shouldn't we be meeting after, as Commissioner Link has suggested?
After the test has happened.
Right, we have some evidence to say when. And I'm not, I'm not saying that the tree is or isn't sick. It may, it may be in very grave condition, but may isn't enough for me. You know, if, if we're going to make a decision based on a finding that a tree is ill, let's have a finding that the tree is ill.
Okay, then, then I think it makes sense to us that none of us want to change that. That, that section four, correct? And that, that you would approve it if the tree proved to be ill. But otherwise it doesn't make sense, correct? Commissioner Lanson, I'm ignoring you, I'm sorry.
I, I just had actually a quick question. I think the only reason we're even here is because there's three trees at issue. If for whatever reason, we only voted on the two trees, my question to Mr. Slim or staff is couldn't the applicant come back as to tree, as to tree three later on and do that as an independent issue that would not come before us?
No.
Procedurally, I, I believe that, well, no, it's the size of the tree, I think, is what triggers this, this hearing, yeah.
I think, I think the tree would have to come in front of us again anyway.
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
So it's easier to prove it as a, as conditional to it being proved to be diseased, in which case it won't have to come back to us.
A removal of any, a request for removal of any tree, oak tree larger than 24 inches diameter requires planning commission review.
Yeah. Commissioner McMahon?
So if I'm going to extrapolate from what Commissioner Lanson is saying is if we were to vote on just the two trees that we seem to be in agreeance on, then it's up to the applicant whether they want to go through that arduous test. That, that sounds like it's a real pain, a lot of time, a lot of money. And if they want to pursue that test and then come back to us, they could. And if they decided that maybe it wasn't so bad and they don't want to go through that arduous test, they don't have to come back and they get the answer for the other two trees.
Agreed. And if we leave it as is and we vote yes pending that test goes positive, and if they choose to do that, then the city will plan, approve it without it even coming back to us. It'll just be handled.
Good point.
I want to be clear on this. I'm not taking a position on whether tree three should stay up or come down. I don't, I feel I don't have enough information tonight to make that determination if we're using disease as the basis for a finding.
But if we're using disease as the basis and it, it turns out that the tree is diseased if they do the testing, then would you vote for it hypothetically today?
Given that that's exactly the base. Given we are using that exact basis to what sounds like there's agreement that we would proceed with an approval of taking down tree two A.
Okay.
Given that we're using that same logic on a different tree than yes.
So I think that we're in agreement with staff's recommendation then.
On the tree that, where there is evidence of disease now.
Well, they're saying that we should approve the removal of the third tree pending a positive test for the same disease that the tree two has. Otherwise that tree is not going to be removable.
Right, so, so staff has presented, the applicant has presented and staff has presented us with evidence of disease in tree two A.
Correct.
None of the reports from any of the three arborists have presented us with evidence, with physical evidence of fungus in tree three, as of tonight, is my understanding. I, I hope I'm saying that correctly.
I'm in agreement.
If I'm not, please correct me, but.
But.
But, but that's the distinction. And if we're using disease as the, the line that we're crossing or the basis for a finding, then we, it sounds like we have it on two A. We do not have it on three. If there are other bases for having a discussion about three, I'm happy to have that discussion. But on the question of disease, I don't think we have the evidence.
Well, I think we're in agreement that the majority of commissioners said that if it's a safety issue, we, we're not going to, we're not going to say a safety issue is something that, if you created the safety issue yourself.
It's, it's certainly a concern for me. I don't know, as Commissioner Link has said, I don't know that it's a basis for a finding.
Exactly. Senior Planner Slim, I'd say you're tempting to speak.
All I want to do is offer some clarification with, with two things. With respect to the, to the reports and specifically the city, city consultants, city consulting arborists, that is correct. I think one, one did mention the, the, the branches and, but, and some, and some dieback or foliage changes. The other one did not, said there did, was absence of any, of any evidence. So that's, that's the only clarification I want to offer for, for those two reports. But the other thing I did want to mention is just so we understand that the, the decision here is two things. If they don't go forward with the lab test, they can't remove the tree. If they do go forward with the lab test and the lab test come back negative, they can't remove the tree. So that's just something to be clear about. Those are the, those are the, that's how the conditions are meant to, to play out.
So if I may, Mr. Chair?
Please.
Just to follow up. I mean, if, if we do, just do an up or down vote on the application as you presented it to us, that would essentially require a lab test, would it not?
If they want to remove the tree, that is correct.
Right, right, right.
And the lab test, and not just do the lab test, the lab test has to show conclusive evidence that says, yeah, whether it's this, this particular fungus or another pathology that, that's, that's going to cause the, the tree to, to terminally decline.
Right. If, as a matter of procedure though, because, because it is, it is, as the applicant has testified, it is a significant cost and inconvenience to do additional work on, on three. It might, as Commissioner McMahon has suggested, make more sense, or Commissioner Lanson, Commissioner McMahon commented to perhaps change the scope of the, the vote so that it only covers the other two trees.
I think that would be a negative because they've already, they've already put that tree into the process. So I, I don't, I don't see how that would.
So then, then you would prefer, or you're.
I prefer to go vote on all three.
Up, up or down?
As, as is.
Right. Okay.
After the conversation, I prefer that also.
Commissioner Lanson, sorry.
In, in light of how it looks like we're thinking, I think it still goes back to the applicant as to whether or not they want to go through with getting the approval of the application as presented.
Agreed.
Whether they want to then maybe continue it or take it off calendar to then present additional evidence as to the danger issue. Because right now it doesn't sound like they're in favor of the application as presented.
Yeah, so that's, I just wanted to make sure we were in agreement. Then I was going to consult with them.
No, I concur.
I think, I think we're all in agreement at this point. All right, I'm going to follow up with you. At this point, it seems like everybody in the commission has determined that they would like to vote for it as is, as recommended by the staff.
Chair, just for the record, could you have the applicant come up just so they can speak?
Please, come on up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Not used to being in person again. So at this point, we've, we've discussed it, as you've heard. We'd like to vote on this as exists. If you would prefer to withdraw it and go back and review this evidence with an arborist and see if you can, if, if you could change the scope of what the, the recommendation is with staff. You could, or we can give you a decision tonight, whichever you prefer.
Can we get a little bit clarification on the, one, why there was two city arborists set out months apart? And we never saw the results from the first arborist that required us to pay someone to come out and dig up the roots and make whatever observation that he made, which we weren't privy to because we were told by the city that we couldn't see that report. But the city sent out somebody that asked us to dig up the roots and have our tree consultant there, which we paid for. And now we're being asked to do it again, which I don't understand.
The problem I'm running into is that I don't have any arborists here. Neither one of those people nor, from your side or from the staff's side are here to clarify that for me either.
Richard was extremely COVID concerned and he's not very tech savvy. So it, Zoom wasn't an option for him.
I'll defer to Mr. Hay here at this point. Or do, do we have sufficient staff here on duty to, to give us that information?
No, I, I think certainly I understand applicant's comment. I just, there, there's no solution tonight for that issue. So I think your presentation of the two options are appropriate. That is, you either, he can make a, they can make a decision as a, as a team to say, we want to step back and continue this to a, to a time, you know, to a new date. Or, and then see what the arborist says. Or you can make a decision tonight because the decision does have, in a sense, an ability to address all three trees based on, based on the current recommendation by the staff, right?
Copy that.
Okay.
Is, is there no clarification on the, the first city arborist and his report? And when we already dug up the roots once and why?
Unfortunately, everybody that works for staff is in front of you here. And I do not have, I do not have access to the whoever, whoever discussed that with you.
Okay.
Excuse me, Chair Bus, if I can add a dialogue. The report process, the evaluation process is a technical evaluation of one arborist report. And our consultant reviewed those, well, two of our consultants reviewed those reports and provide their responses to that, that analysis. And the analysis from John NS, our consultant, determined that there was no physical signs of symptoms of the disease on the tree. And that why, that's where the recommendation for the lab result was inserted into the resolution. The tree two A did demonstrate signs of symptoms. And then tree six, of course, is just, is, it's blocking the roadway. So the technical analysis has been performed and.
So that's the testing, that, but that's the period of time he's talking about? Or is that a subsequent time?
What Richard had performed was tests on two A and not on tree three. Now, Richard's findings determined or stated that this fungi is highly contagious. It moves through the soil and it's very likely that it has this disease. But there was no conclusion. So the, the way the conditions worded right now, condition, I think it's four, states that upon submitting lab tests that demonstrate the tree does have the disease, if it does have the disease, we have the ability to, based on, on commission decision, to administratively remove, allow removal of that tree.
I understand. I don't think that's his question though. But that's, that's what I'm trying to establish. If you can answer his question, I'm, I'm all in.
Can you repeat the question?
It was, it was just the, the results from, I think that was what the, the most recent arborist had said in May, which is, you know, six months after we tried to get through this. Arborist that came out, I think in November, that dug up roots with Richard, I don't know what his report was, but we're basically being asked to spend the same money on the same thing twice, but we're not allowed to know what the results of the first guy, but the second guy. the second guy said something else.
Okay. The first report by Greg Gainesworth just basically stated that he agrees philosophically with Richard's comments that, you know, it is a highly contagious disease, it is in close proximity to Tree 3, and, and it could have it. But the second consult we sent out said there's no evidence that it does have it, and that's what we're basing our recommendation on.
But the fir, the first arborist didn't have any comments or anything in his report related to the roots that we had to pay to dig up with air hammers and have him inspect?
His comments were, well, to sum them up, he basically said that the disease is highly contagious, we can't confirm with any certainty that tree number three does have disease.
Unfortunately, there was nothing conclusive. So again, a lot of conjecture and suspicion, but nothing conclusive. And then I think what you're talking about, you know, observing those roots, it takes more than just a casual observation. I think you actually have to take a specimen, you have to peel back some of the roots, and you have to test it, culture it. So there's probably more entailed. Again, that's something that's beyond me, but, but that's my suspicion on, on, on how to really determine whether or not it has that.
And just if I can add one more thing about the, you know, the comments of basically a situation that, you know, the applicant created, you know, she obviously, she bought a house that had a pool, the pool that was in a certain location, and based on the drip line and the tree map of the property, you couldn't put a pool between WOT 2 and WOT 3 because it's under both trees. So the only place a pool could go back in is where the pool was. So basically, it would be, it would be telling her, okay, well, you tore a pool out and you can no longer have a pool or put it back in because it's one under this branch that might fall and kill your kids, or the other location is unbuildable.
Copy that. So I, I think we're still stuck at the same two options though. Either we can approve it as is, and you would have to do the soil test in order to get that, that, that third tree removed, or you could withdraw the application this time, go back to staff, present it in that way, and then, and then we could re-present.
I think it would be a continuance of the.
Yeah, basically a continuance, not a withdrawal.
Meaning we would have to have more evidence showing.
Yeah, we'd need, we'd, we'd need evidence from an arborist saying that this, this is a potential issue.
So just basically be another tree report from Richard that says, this is a potential hazard, instead of it's a potentially diseased?
Mr. Kearns, would that be sufficient?
Yeah, they, Richard or another consultant would go out and evaluate the tree and determine whether or not there is a hazardous condition existing.
Can I, I have his most recent report, can I check it? Because there's 25 boxes checked on it that aren't just a fungus. Can I see if it says hazardous conditions or anything in it for WOT 3?
Yeah, we would have to have our consultant take a look at it, whatever his report is. There was no analysis.
I mean, Nazir has the report, but I think if I could put the page right on the, the monitor to see if hazardous conditions or anything else is, is checked on his report that we've already submitted to the city.
No, Ryan.
Because we're only talking about a fungus, but there's a, there's 20 things on his report that aren't a fungus.
I appreciate what you're saying, and I think what you're referring to, there's a, there's a matrix they use, and basically you just fill in the dot here, fill in the dot there. And that's again, this is, it's like a paint palette, you know, there's a couple of things here and there, but it doesn't, it, we need, that's why you need an arborist to basically state it explicitly, the, you know, the, the concert of these items here make it hazardous, not just, you know, I mean, because there's, those are just potential, and I don't think we can use that as, as a definitive, you know, definitive state of the tree.
Well, from my position, this would have been wonderful to know six, 12, 18 months ago when this entire process started, and I would have been happy to provide whatever documentation you would need to see that. But as it is, I've jumped through hoops for the last year and a half to try to save trees with a breathing system, multiple thousands of dollars, being told that these trees are still declining, you know, holding up the job, not being able to move forward, and, and being told that it's hazardous conditions. So at what point is it not my liability and it's now the city's liability? I'm telling you, this tree, I've been told it needs to go. There's been evidence that it should go, and now you're needing more evidence on a, you know, different level that it should go, when I'm saying I have children present in my yard and I'm concerned about that liability, that I do not want to take that on as a homeowner. And it was not something that I created.
Commissioner Newman, you'd like to speak?
Ms. Wolf, if I may, the, the very first arborist report in this process was from Mr. Campbell on your behalf.
Correct.
And Mr. Campbell did dig up some roots in Tree 2A and did find some evidence of disease. I did not read anything in Mr. Campbell's report that provided evidence, and, and everything that went forward from that point was saying the basis for removing these trees is disease. So we're not going to talk about hazards, we're not going to talk about lightning strikes or wildfires or locusts or some, something else. We're, we're going to talk about disease here. I did not find anything in Mr. Campbell's report, the first report that was done, that provided evidence of disease in Tree 3. And so I guess maybe we could all save ourselves some time. Is there something more from Mr. Campbell that, that does show that there's a disease problem, which was the initial tack that the first arborist took here?
Well, my understanding is that the grade has gone down significantly since the first report, so.
Right, but is there, is there evidence of disease in Tree 3 that Mr. Campbell provided? That, that's the question I'm asking.
Whether it would be disease or, or just imminent decline, I'm not sure why the, I understand your position, but I'm not sure why if it's being, if it is known to decline, whether it's disease or it's just dying, why that actually matters.
Well, well, I'm, I'm trying to do two things. One, one is I'm asking a question, is, is, I'm asking for evidence of disease in Tree 3, because we have three arborist reports in front of us, starting with Mr. Campbell's, you're, you're on, on your behalf, and none of those three provide that evidence. And, and then two, when, when you're asking about, well, what about these other bases besides disease? The reason we started with disease, and the reason disease is the main current through this report is because that's where we began. And yes, we can have a conversation about other kinds of things, but if we go back to where this started, Mr. Campbell's report, it said that the reason we should take this tree down is because it's probably diseased. And what I'm asking for is something more than probably. Is there something that says that this tree is diseased?
Right, I hear what you're saying.
So is there, is there something that maybe he left out of the report or something additional, some later report? Is there something that shows that Tree 3 is diseased?
Yeah, exactly. I couldn't, I couldn't speak for him. I guess all I could say is what I, what I've been told by him, which is that it is his opinion that this is very contagious, it's in the soil, it will, if it's not already killing this tree, it will kill this tree. And so that was good enough for me.
And I'm not, I'm not necessarily disagreeingly, I want to be clear on that, but, but to make a determination that something is diseased and therefore can come down, I, I need to know that it is diseased.
So a question I have is if, I mean, obviously, it's a safety concern for her. I mean, you're going to have 50 kids from Oaks Christian there this weekend, and I don't want to be sued by any of their parents. So if it's something where we have to go through and spend a bunch of money and dig up the yard again and do lab results, is this, we send the lab results to Nazir, you guys look at it, you approve it over the counter, we have the tree service cut it down, or it's another two, three, six month process?
No, it would be a done deal.
Of postings and hearings and everything.
If we go to a vote and we vote yes, you do that, it shows disease in the tree, you get your, you get your, your, your tree removal permit.
And the other flip side of that would be, we say we're, we, we would rather take this off the table and come back to you with.
If, if you wanted to change the scope of what we're looking at.
And then we go through the whole process again?
To, to some degree. Yeah, but the review of the, of the, of an arborist and all that stuff.
Yeah, we would continue it to a date certain, or to a, to a date.
Date uncertain.
Uncertain, right, uncertain, excuse me. And then, since we already know the case, it would be something in which you would just focus on.
Yeah.
The remaining elements.
Yeah. So you wouldn't have to do all this in the meeting, but an arborist's report would have to happen, it would have to show the hazards, staff would have to review that with their arborist, they'd have a response to it, then you'd come back, we'd discuss it, and then we'd have a vote.
Is, I, I know what her concerns are and what she's been waiting for, for a few years. If, if you approve it pending a lab result, and we're allowed to take out WO2 and 6, and then get into the middle of the winter when the kids aren't using the pool and it's not disrupting everything that they've been working on for two years, and then we dig up the yard, and then we talk about WO2, 3, is that an option? Or are we required to do all of this at the same time?
Mr. Hay here, how long is our good, our vote good for?
Well, I, I guess I'm not understanding the, the question, but your, your vote is.
If, if we, if we, if we approve this tonight.
Right.
Could they do this, this, over the winter, this winter?
Oh, as far as the testing of the third tree? Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so yes.
Could we take out WOT 2 and 6?
Yeah, because those will already be done.
For an extended period of time until she goes out of town, hopefully, for a month, and I can dig up the yard and she doesn't fry the whole time, and I can put it back and nobody knows what happened?
Right, so, so first of all, just to be clear with the, what the recommendation is for you as an applicant, and, and for the decision makers. The, the recommendation is to permit the removal of 2 and 6 and 3, but 3 is conditioned upon a finding of the disease from lab results. So as far as the, the decision, if that was made tonight, that would be the decision unless it was appealed by anybody, which is the right of anyone who can, who wants to appeal it within 10 days.
Correct, so we would know in 10 days if.
Correct. So then what would happen is you can go forward with whatever pace you want to go through as far as 2 and 6, of course, and then 3 at your position, because the, the decision that you make is that Tree 3 cannot be removed unless there is that result. That is what is presented tonight from the recommendation. The option that has been discussed with you is if you want to not have a decision like that tonight, and you want to come back again with a continuance of this hearing, and then come back with additional information for Tree 3, that is an option that they are providing for you tonight that you can decide. So either one is, one, you have the motion that would be made, and based on the recommendation, that would be, assuming that's where they would go, that is removal of Tree 2, Tree 6, and then for 3, you would have to show the lab results. And again, I also don't know, and again, we do not have the arborist here tonight, but I do not know what is required for that lab testing. So when you mentioned bringing up all the soil and everything like that, I don't know what's required to do the testing. So I don't know the extent of what, you obviously had the experience before. I, I don't know from not having one here as to what would be required for that testing, for the, for the lab testing results.
I, I spoke with Richard about it, and they, you know, dig up the roots till they, they have to find, you know, a physical area of the root that is damaged, whether it's, you know, cut or oozing or something, test that, and then it gets sent. Well, you told me one of the UC schools does the testing, I don't remember which one. But, you know, if, if during that time, he did a new report based on the lab testing and hazardous conditions, and it's basically, you know, a new, a new permit based on WOT 3?
So, so again, to be clear tonight, if they were to vote with staff's recommendation, it would be removal of 2, Tree 2, Tree 6, and then for 3, it would be removed if you show evidence that is diseased. If you don't show evidence of disease, you don't have permission to remove it based on the decision that would be made tonight.
Okay.
But again, the option would be that you could continue this matter and bring more evidence for Tree 3 if that's your desire. That's what they're offering you tonight.
And, Mr., if I may, Mr. Hay here, just one, one clarification, just to be clear about process. You mentioned a 10-day appeal. It's a 10-day window to file an appeal? The appeal itself would be sometime down the road after that.
Right.
It wouldn't be like a, we make a decision, you go, you guys stink, we don't like that decision, so 10 days from then, you'd have another decision. It would be sometime after that.
If there is an appeal.
Correct.
Okay.
Just to be clear on timeline.
I think you have to decide.
I'll let you guys huddle up, I will.
Okay, thank you.
Are, are you comfortable with it, or? Or you want to talk? Yeah.
Chair Bus, quick point of clarification with Mr. Kearns. If the applicant were to.
Mike, who's talking to me? Sorry, I'm already hearing, so sometimes I don't know whose voice it is.
Well, and the faces isn't popping up as the person speaking on, on Zoom, so it's a completely different situation, it's a wild world. If the applicant were to come back with a report documenting hazards, the city's consultant would then need to review that report and provide those findings, or either concur with those findings, or submit that again to the planning commission, or they'd go that direction?
Yeah, that actually changes the procedural direction. Hazards, dead or hazardous trees go through what's called a type A verification, that the tree is a dead or hazardous specimen and is no longer protected by the ordinance. So then the applicant has the ability to do what they like with that tree at that point.
Yeah.
The permit process we're going through now is because it's, it's not been shown that it is dead or hazardous. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Sure.
So just to clarify, we would not be able, as the commission, to change the terms of the, of the hearing on the fly. We couldn't say, well, we're going to talk about hazards tonight. We'd need, we need to have that go through staff?
Yeah, that would have to go through another process.
Okay.
It'd be a, basically a parallel process to this permit.
All right, thank you.
That's why I was indicating that the applicant had to decide whether to withdraw or continue the application first, because they weren't actually in agreement with it, because they didn't have the necessary evidence to show the hazard.
Thank you, Commissioner Lanson. Please return to the, so we can get you on mic.
Well, we would like to just move forward with a decision tonight, and if we need to supply more evidence for Tree 3, we will do that.
Okay, I, I missed that, so you just got to say it a little bit louder for me.
Oh, we're going to go ahead and go ahead with a decision tonight, and if we need to get more evidence for Tree 3, we will do that.
Okay, so you want us to go ahead and vote tonight, and then we'll just go from there? All right, perfect, thank you so much, and thank you for your patience on this. All right, I'd like to go ahead and close the public hearing, and I will open up the floor for a motion and/or discussion with my fellow commissioners. I see nobody jumping, so I'm going to force Commissioner Lanson to speak.
Thank you, Chair Bus. Looking at the, the issue, I think Tree 6, to me, seems like it's pretty clear that that has to be removed. I don't see a trimming that's likely going to be possible, so I'm in agreement with that. Tree 2, I believe we've all kind of looked through and saw that that does have the disease issue, so I don't have a problem with that. Tree 3, at this point, again, we don't have, in my opinion, sufficient evidence to show disease. We don't have any evidence that was presented to us to show the hazard, and I'm not really happy about trying to do things on the fly, especially when, again, we enforce the rules, we don't make the rules. So I am ultimately in favor of, of the staff position. We'll go ahead and make the motion to recommend that OTP 2020-70547 be approved based upon the conditions provided in the staff report.
Any other comments from commissioners? Commissioner Newman?
I will support Commissioner Lanson's motion. No one's ever happy to see trees come down in the city, and I'm very sympathetic to the comments and the positions raised by the representatives from the HOA. I think there is evidence to support the findings with regards that what we heard tonight about, certainly about Tree 2A, there's physical evidence of disease. We can talk about whether 6 can or cannot be mitigated, but it seems like there's pretty strong concurrence here, even if I were to vote against it, that, that there's a public safety hazard posed by the current configuration of Tree 6. So I'll, I will support the motion.
Thank you. Secretary Gore, if you'll prepare us for a vote.
Commissioner Lanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Link?
Aye.
Commissioner McMahon?
Aye.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Chair Bus?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Any aggrieved party who wishes to appeal the planning commission's decision may do so by filing an appeal with the community development department within 10 days. All right. Thank you, everybody, for your patience with that exhaustive discussion. We're going to move on to commission comments and AB 123 reports. Are there any comments from my fellow commissioners?
I just want to say.
Commissioner McMahon?
I do appreciate all you've been through, and it sounds like you've tried really hard to do the right thing, and I understand your frustration. and it sounds like you've tried really hard to do the right thing, and I understand your frustration, and I appreciate that. But I think this is the only thing that we could have done tonight. So my sympathies, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. I think you expressed all of our sentiments the same. Often, we like this process to be a lot smoother and a lot easier for residents, and sometimes it does not work that way. And there are, the reason for it is because the trees are very important to the city, obviously. And so sometimes when things don't go smoothly, it's because they are so important to us. So, thank you. Mr. Kearns, are there any follow-up items, announcements, or upcoming issues?
Yes, thanks, thank you, Chair. Just an update on future elite fitness, that was continued at the planning commission a few meetings ago. We're still waiting for information from the applicant before we can bring that back, so we're, the evaluation's continuing. June 21st, we have an item shaping up for the planning commission review. It's, it's about 2, it's 218 apartment units, a hotel complex over at the Timber School site on Newbury Road. So that would be before you on June 21st, and that is all I have.
All right, thank you very much. And with that, we will adjourn this meeting to the next meeting on June 21st, 2021, at 6:00 PM. Thank you.